I would like to call the Clearlake City Council and the Development Assistant Agency Meeting to order. Today is Thursday, November 9th, 2017. It is a little after 6:00 P.M. And we'll clear it up and call it off.
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Councilmember Bennett?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sabatini?
Here.
Mayor Perdor?
Here.
Mr. Bennett, do you need us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Is Melinda down here?
I am.
Please, if you'd like to stay, remain standing, we'd like to have our invitation by now.
I'm filling in for Deborah Feather tonight.
Well, thank you. If you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone so everyone can hear.
Sure.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Thank you, Father, for tonight. Lord, we just thank you that you are our Lord over this city, over our country, as we just said in our pledge, "One nation, under God." Lord, we just thank you for your wisdom. We ask you to instill that into every person on this council. Lord, we just ask you to guide this city in the direction that you would have it to go. We know, Lord, that you have good plans to prosper us, good plans and plans to not harm us, but to give us hope and a future. And, Lord, that is what we believe for here. I thank you, Lord, that you have your hand on this place, and I believe tonight, Lord, you're going to guide every single decision that comes forth in this city for the good of the citizens. Lord, I thank you that each person on this council has a heart to serve the community and do what's right. I pray your blessings over every single person, including the city clerk, the director of finance, the police department, the chief of police, the city manager, the city council, code enforcement, and public works. Father, we just thank you, and we praise you, Lord, and we just declare tonight that you are Lord here in Clearlake, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you very much. Mr. Folsom, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask that we move item number 12 and 13 to be placed right after consent before the public hearing.
So before consent?
Right after consent, because we have a number of people here in the audience from other agencies.
Yes, sir. Very good. Any other requests or change? No. Someone wants you to adopt the agenda? Tell them. Have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass agenda. I would just like... Mr. Jones, any announcements from closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action from closed session. I will note that item number three, closed session, council didn't get to, and will resume that closed session after this open session, at which point, when we come back from that closed session, I'll make another reporting out as to whether any actions taken on item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Folsom. Moving on to presentations. Sure would be nice if you guys could come down and join me down there. Not yet. Not yet.
I have some papers from Halloween I'd like to show.
Thank you. I was already giving out certificates. Well, that's the very same thing.
If you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
All right. So as you know, we had City Halloween on October 31st. We gave out candy from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. here in the lobby. We had a committee, we started planning this in, I think the end of August was when we began. Julie, Adeline, Tina, Chelsea, Nikki, and myself, and Vicky Leonard, we got to plan this. We put together a theme called "The Night at the Movies," where staff and volunteers, we all dressed as movie characters. This was a 100 percent, as always, donation-funded event. Donation of candy, donations of toys, and pencils for children with allergies. Also, Clearlake Police Department paid for reflective trick-or-treat bags with asset forfeiture funds. This year, 20 pepperoni and cheese pizzas were donated by Cecil's Pizza, and we gave out almost 300 bags of candy and goodies given out in three hours. We did have some leftover candy, which we are donating to Operation Tangle Mine. So here's some pictures we put together, bags starting at the beginning, a couple weeks beforehand. Here's staff dressed up. We have the Pink Ladies. There's our Pink Ladies. We did have to work during the normal day, dressed up. We had the clown from It!, which was pretty awesome. Foods, etc., donated, some treats, and donuts and cakes together. Lots of people from family. Oh, I didn't realize I had one in my purse. We had a Hollywood backdrop for people to take pictures with.
Thank you very much. And we gave out... Because we want to make sure the kids are taking care of their teeth. Thank you, Mark, for that, and for the help. Okay, now, don't leave them. Sulfur fire updates later. Go on down, guys. We've got lots to give out. If I call your name, could you please come up and stand with Melissa? Cheryl Hudson? Cheryl here? There she is. Susan Gooden... Goodnick?
Goodno.
Goodno? Are you just going to say that? Sorry. A member from Grocery Outlet. A representative from Grocery Outlet here. Dang, too bad. Clearlake Automotive. The Bridges here. Nope. All right, Hawks. Come on up. Thought I saw you. Anyone from Cecil's Pizza? Don't need all those good pizzas for everybody to enjoy. Too bad, I've got a lot of deliveries to make. Chuck and Vicky Leonard, are they here? I saw their smiling faces. Well, Vicki's, anyway.
Oh, come on, Chuck will smile.
And Joanne Moore. Joanne Moore, come on up, Joanne.
Actually, Ken.
Joanne, thank you. I love the guy still standing. Let's see.
You're not from Geraldo?
No, we're not.
Not good, maybe six months.
You're not Cecil. You did all the work. Folks, I'll tell you what, it's just an honor and a privilege to work with such a great group of folks. And thank you, Melissa, for coordinating all this and bringing it all together. Your city council just couldn't be happier. When we see the kids, and they're coming down, and they're doing something good and positive and safe on Halloween, it's just what it's all about, to come together as a community. So thank you so much for everything. (Applause). I want the deliveries with the rest of those that didn't get out. You bet, you bet. So thank you all very much. Thank you for coming down and being a part of this tonight. Thanks for listening. Next. I want to see my friend Ginger. What? There she is. Bring your group up, Ginger. Bring your group up. I don't know. It's that 5 percent thing.
I know, yes.
Well, wait, who's it?
I'm Jenny Johnson.
Hi, Jenny Johnson. How much per hour? But I always thought Ginger was the one coordinating everything and telling me what to do. So we could put this all together. Thank you so much, Ginger, for doing that and all of that, because this is such an important program. So if you don't mind, I would like to read this, and then you can introduce your group and say a few words. Is that okay?
All right, fine.
So we have a lot of folks in our community who are older, they have some frailties, they might have some memory issues, and they have people that care for them a lot of the time. And as anyone knows, who's given just a small fraction of their time to care for someone who's ailing, it can get a little burdensome. But to do that day in and day out can oftentimes be overwhelming, and they need a rescue, and they need some help. And because of these funny folks with their smiling faces, they get that, and we just want to recognize that. City council wants to identify that and take a moment to present this proclamation. So designating the month of November 2017 as Alzheimer's Awareness Month in Clearlake and honoring Eva Johnson as founder of the Adult Day Care Program known as Elder Day Services of Lake County, California, Inc., whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive condition which erodes connective and functional abilities and leads to implications and total dependency, and whereas more than 1,300 Lake County residents suffer from Alzheimer's disease, causing severe emotional, medical, and financial stress on their families, and whereas Elder Day Care Program and the Elder Day Services Program have provided daycare, training, consultation, information, and referral to those living with the disease and their caregivers for the past 20 years, and whereas although great advancements have been made in recent years to understand Alzheimer's disease, continued involvement of health care providers and governmental entities will result in improvement in patient care, education for family caregivers, and training for professional volunteers. And whereas continued education and support groups will help increase awareness of this disease and elevate fears associated with, alleviate fears associated with it, now therefore be it proclaimed, the city council of the city of Clearlake has hereby proclaimed the month of November 2017 as Alzheimer's Awareness Month and urges all citizens to honor Eva Johnson and her dedicated and tireless effort to offer day services, support, and assistance to families and caregivers serving those with this disease. Dayed this night, date of November 2017, by the Clearlake City Council. Thank you very much.
(Applause).
The people that are up here, my name is Jenny Johnson. I'm no relation to Eva. Eva would like to have been here tonight because of help, she wasn't, like, unable to make it. But we have Keneen, Diana, I'm going to do first names because I have memory issues myself, Diana, Agnes, Ginger, you know, Dee, Betty, and Jerry. We have people who are actually on our, well, one of the people who are on our Board of Directors, Jerry's husband, his spouse is in the program for many years, Keneen is some of Board of Directors, Diana's husband, and we helped with her, and Agnes is actually one of our caregivers that works at the program. And have I covered everyone? So I have a few words that Eva Johnson asked me if I would read something. So this is from Eva, our founder of the Adult Day Care Respite of Clearlake. First, I want to thank you for the great honor you have given me. When my husband was diagnosed with Alzheimer's in 1985, Redwood Caregiver Resource Center had just started support groups for the caregivers. This was the only help for us caregivers, although the need was great. Day programs were available in urban areas but not in rural communities. In 1993, a day program was started at the Lakeport Senior Center with money from a Clearlake man named Ottinger. It was difficult for South County people to attend, so we decided to investigate the possibility of a program in the Clearlake area. Many people and entities were involved in starting this program 20 years ago. Caregivers, outreach workers, social workers, and the Clearlake Senior Center Director at that time got a task force together to check the feasibility of having a program in the Clearlake area. We concluded it was needed. Senior Support Services of Upper Lake was our umbrella agency. We started in April of 1997, one day a week. By 1999, we received a grant and had two days. A second program was started and was earned by Caroline Danning in 2001. Jenny Johnson took over the Clearlake program in 2011 and has done a wonderful job. There is now a program in Middletown under her direction. I am so proud of this program and how it's continued, and so appreciate the attention your council has given to it this year. Please continue to advise and be proud of these programs, which are so vital to the caregivers. They are the ones who need this kind of support. The programs are now under the umbrella of Elder Day Services of Lake County. Again, thank you for this honor. I did not do this alone. It takes a village.
Thank you. That's our new official city pin. Thank you. Thank you. Next, and without further ado, if I call your name, and you would please come up here and join us, we would like to appreciate our volunteers for the city of Clearlake. First on my list is Vicky Leonard. Thank you so much. I want you to stand right here. Richard Moore. Is Richard here tonight? Volunteers in policing? No. He's probably off working somewhere. No, Richard does a lot of hours with our police department. We do appreciate it. Is Ross Bartoli? There you are, Ross. Saw you earlier today. Thank you for your service, sir. Jim Hopkins. Is he here tonight? Marie Weathers. Volunteering for at least a couple of years, 20 years. Maria Barnes. Is Maria here? Mitch Markowitz. Did Mitch make it down tonight? Lou Bard?
Yeah.
Beard? No. For those who can't see, I'm looking to Sergeant Snyder to do this. And I'll probably butcher this one. Martine Pults?
Martin.
Martin?
Martin.
Thank you. Correct me. Thank you for your service helping out our police department. Linda Peritella?
Peroff. Peroff. (Laughter).
He's going back to school next week.
I'm going to give these to the vice mayor to read, and then we can all point fingers ahead. No, is Angela Amaral here? No. Didn't know, no. And this one, Rogers Uto? No, Roger Shudo. But I don't see Roger here either. Anyway. We wanted to take a couple of minutes, council did, to thank each and every one of you, to thank the other volunteers who come and give so much of their time. As you guys know, because you've been doing it, you get up early in the morning, every day that you're scheduled, and you get that big check at the end of the week, which basically you can cash with our thanks. But the services that you all provide, you know how invaluable you are to us, and we just really want to thank you so much. So we want to do this. I just had this thought. Thank you very much. The vice mayor would like to thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you very, very much for getting up in the middle of the night, turning on a directing trap, answering the phone. We're wrong. I'm wrong. Yeah. Okay. We take this. Very good.
Oh, sorry, kid.
I'll give these to the others. I know, Diane, I just got the word here. Yeah, I thought I saw them. Now, Adeline, please come up. We're celebrating 10 years of service with Adeline. I'm sure you have a little more than that now, but thank you so much for your years of service. 15 years of service. Brian Peterson. 10 years. Rob Joseph here. I don't see him running. So I'll get this to the chief as well. Again, we just can't say enough or express our appreciation to really impact all the work that you guys have done and the service that you've provided in our city for the number of years that you've worked here. I know that we're all rolling down the same track now. We want to make Clearlake a safer place, a better place to live, and you guys are all instrumental in doing that. If you'd like, you're welcome to have a minute or two to say something, or... Well, thank you, I'll do the same thing. Thank you so much. All the members of council are so grateful for everything you guys are doing. Thank you, Sergeant. Thank you very much. You can agree here, anyway. Really appreciate it. Yeah, I know. Well, absolutely, and thank you. See? I get a little ass in mind. I also see some family members here. Thank you so much for sharing your loved ones with us. Thank you for those nights that they get called out if they're working with the police department, or the extra hours they're having to work over some financial issues here at the office, or an extra day or something that they can't spend with you guys. It truly, it's getting our city to the place where we want it to be. So thank you all so much for your service, and I look forward to another bunch of years before you retire. Very good. Thank you so much. That concludes it. Yes, sir. I'll get these to the store doors. Okay, now the fun's over. I've got to go back to work. All right, next on our agenda is public comment. Public comment is a time when anyone can share a concern or an issue they would like to bring before the council to air and agree with. We allow three minutes for you to do this. Please understand that we cannot respond. We can't answer your questions, so please keep that in mind. And public comment is for comments made on an item not on our agenda. If you'd like to speak to something that is on the agenda, please wait until that timed item. Our first, who submitted a public comment card, is Mr. Hill Shields. He would like to talk to us about a poor elderly.
Good evening. I hope everybody's doing well. Now, you know the law back, Governor Brown, John Guaramendi, and some other greedy people with deep pockets. Raise gasoline 12 cents a gallon, DMV, diesel 20 cents a gallon. This whole country is set up on gas and oil. Anything that is transported, everything else will go up. Food, clothing, material, you name it. Now, why did they put this hardship on the poor and the elderly? It's beyond me. All of them should be recalled. It's like people, they say, "Oh, government's bad, the school system's bad." It's not bad. It's the people involved in it that make it bad. Greedy, deep-pocketed people that get involved in the system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. So are anyone else that would like to speak during public comment to get on an item not on our agenda? This is your time. You step forward. Seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to council for our consent agenda. Any changes to the consent agenda, Mr. Folsom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Any member wants you to pull an item on the consent agenda? Very well. Any member of the public wanting to discuss an item that is on our consent agenda tonight, please let me know, and we can have that pulled. Seeing none, we'll move, I'll close that and move back. Motion to accept the consent agenda as is. I have a motion to second by Councilmember Overton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we will move on to items 12 and 13.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 12 is the sulfur fire update. Just want to give you an update as to where we are and what things have been going on. So last week, there were crews that are contracted by the Department of Toxic Substances Control, or otherwise known as DTSC. They were in the burn area dealing with household hazardous waste, taking care of propane tanks, other types of things like hazardous chemicals and those types of things. They took care of all that. This week, the crews were in the burn area primarily around the waterfront spraying an encapsulant called PosiShell. So you may have noticed big tankers out there with cannon on the top of it where they were out shooting along, primarily along Lake Shore Drive is where you would have seen them. PosiShell was authorized by the state for certain properties to keep the hazardous debris from getting into the lake. There was concern that there would be additional contamination into the lake, which is a drinking water source for the entire county. PosiShell is made from cellulose, fine ground clay, Portland cement, and water. It's a non-toxic substance. It was just there, put there to hold the debris down and shed water so that it wouldn't have the bad stuff going through the water. Debris removal crews are currently in the burn area removing fire debris. City crews are removing trees, maintaining the straw on the hillsides and straw waddles for erosion control. Utilities are still working on replacing infrastructure. There was a pine tree that was taken down today off of Lake Shore Drive. State crews expect to be removing debris for the remainder of the calendar year. This is something I really want to stress. This is really, really critically important. Debris removal is the responsibility of the property owner, and removal of the debris is not optional. It has to get done. Currently, property owners have the option to participate in a state debris removal program that's overseen by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. That state debris program will handle the debris removal at no upfront cost to the property owner. There is cost, the cost recovery is limited to the amount of insurance specified for debris removal, and basically that means that there's no duplication of benefits allowed. So if you're given X amount of dollars for debris removal for your insurance, that has to go towards the actual cost, but you're not liable for additional costs over that. But you can't just give the money, have someone else do the work, and... If property owners do decide to choose to handle the debris removal themselves, they will have a deadline to do so, we haven't set that yet. However, Sonoma County did set November 22nd as a deadline to submit an application or plan to handle through a private contractor. So, there is going to be a deadline coming up, it just hasn't been set yet. I really need to reiterate this, this just came out this week, that the state has a deadline for Lake County of Monday, November 13th, at 5:00 p.m. for the return of Lake County ROE forms, if a property owner wants to participate in the state program. As of our update at 1:30 today, there were 83 ROEs submitted for the sulfur fire out of approximately 143 properties that are eligible for it. If you were to go through the burn area, you'll see straw on the hills and waddles along the side of the road, as there for erosion control. Going forward, one of our most significant concerns is erosion to the hillsides within the burn area, potentially causing mudslides into homes or damaging roads. Item number 13 that we're going to talk about next on the agenda is to put in place some what's called K-rail, putting in additional straw mulching and hydro-sing to safeguard against future mudslides to the degree that we can. This is not a recommendation to the council, this is a recommendation to folks who are either here or who are watching this. Please stand at the burn area unless you're a resident or a property owner. Right now, there's a lot of large vehicle traffic. There's dump trucks that are going through there, there's construction vehicles, there's utility vehicles, there's city vehicles, a lot of heavy trucks that are out there. Some of these trucks take up a good part of the road, under the other side of the road, so oncoming traffic really causes a hazard, not only to yourself, but to those workers out there as well. So unless you have a reason to be there, don't just go out there. Also, to reiterate, please return the right-of-entry forms by Monday, November 13th, at 5:00 p.m., either to City Hall here or County Environmental Health Department, otherwise you will be solely responsible for the cleanup of your property. Environmental Health has information available to process to clean your property if you opt out of the government cleanup program, but again, choosing to not clean up is not an option. Just some additional information, emergencies can come on suddenly. Our ability as a city to individually notify everyone of an evacuation can be limited, especially if the size of the evacuation area is large or the event happens quickly, as happened in this event. So you cannot depend on in-person notifications for evacuation. The main way that we let our community know about evacuation is through NICSOL. So, highly, highly, highly encourage folks, sign up for NICSOL, that's the first way that we're going to notify folks that there is an evacuation of a certain area. Secondarily, almost just as important, sign up for Code Red through the county, that's another program where they can send out notifications for these types of events as well. Be prepared to evacuate when you're given the notice. Get a go-bag ready, these have been talked about due to the other fires that we've had in this county. Have a go-bag with your clothes, ready access to vital records and medications so that you're able to go when and if you get that notification. FEMA, we just found this out today, FEMA will be locating several temporary modular housing units at the Quilic Resort for residents displaced by the fire. They had placed some temporary housing there during the valley fire, they're going to be placing some units there again as well. FEMA, SBA, CAL-ES, and others are still located at what's now called the Disaster Recovery Center, or DRC, which is at the community center, otherwise known by some people as the senior center. And, I just want to reiterate this, we've been, we as staff have been just extremely pleased with the cooperation and assistance we've been, we've received with FEMA, CAL-ES, the U.S. Corps of Engineers, Lake County, and all the various contractors that we've worked with so far. So I'm very happy with everything that's going on and the progress that we've made so far. I'm going to put somebody on the spot, we actually have Ray Ruminsky here with the county. We, we as a city, we contract with Lake County to handle that debris removal process for us. If Ray's got a couple of updates that he can give us, I'd appreciate his...
Yes, my name is Ray Ruminsky with County Health Department. Greg mentioned the November 13 deadline for ROE sign-ups. If anyone's here today and your property was burned, I have copies of that, I can answer your questions. If you have questions, I can go over the form with you, if you want to fill it out and give it to me, we can do that tonight. I also have the forms, the work plan, the information packet, and the registration form, if you're going to hire your own private contractor, I'd be happy to talk with anyone. If you have friends and neighbors who are owners of a property that was destroyed, you know, pass this message on to them, says we have.
We've got a number of representatives from FEMA, CAL-ES, U.S. Corps of Engineer, they're all here if we have questions, if we require some specialized answers. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. So, moving on to item 13, also we've got...
About open public comment question.
Oh, I apologize. If there's any member of the public that would like to discuss item 12, it's just presented by our city manager, this is your chance to do so. Step up to the microphone. Seeing none, I'll bring it back. We have no formal action to take, just a simple report. Item 13, authorization to commit share of cost expenses due to the sulfur fire for hazard mitigation. Mr. Paulson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doug, you taking this one?
Sure. So, Greg mentioned in his report, we had some other mitigations that we were trying to get into place. During the second day of the fire, I notified NRCS, that's Natural Resource Conservation Service, they work for the USDA. So what they do is they come out here, out to our burn area, and they do an assessment on our burn, so we, what we were looking at is that slope stabilization above San Joaquin Lake Shore Drive. So I gave them direction to come up with the mitigation plan. And what you have in front of you is the mitigation plan. The cost is not that big, but we have a cost share. What we are asking is for approval to, for the sponsorship. Our cost is 25%, it's $33,625. After we collect that money, then we resubmit to CAL-ES, which will pick up another portion of it, and our cost is only going to be 6.25%, which is going to equate to about $1,800 and some change. So what we're, yeah, not a big cost. So what they're going to do is identify certain drainages where we had, the fire got really hot. And if you've been out there, you'll see there's areas out there, you'll see pockets on the ridge, that's what that is, where the trees cut, the fire was so hot, it burned down, it burns down. This is all new to me, I've learned this on this fire. It burns down and gets into the roots. So what it does, you'll see there's like basketball-sized holes, off those poles, there's like little tunnels down there. And founded, those roots continue to burn underground. So what we're looking at is water infiltrating into those, and those are your potential slips. So they've come up with a pretty good plan. Their plan is to protect houses that are below those slips, nothing more than that. So what we have here is what we see before you. I think what we, after some further discussion today, I think what I'm asked, what we'd like to ask is that you put a limit, not to $33,000, raise it to 25, not to exceed $55,000, or $50,000, because there's some undetermined costs in there that we still need to figure out. We're trying to get this put together as soon as possible, it could change. Even at $50,000, our cost is going to be, you know, $3,000, not much, a little $3,000. And that's, any questions, second?
You're asking us to authorize you or a couple of works to spend up $250,000?
Well, we would front the money, and then we'd submit to CAL-ES, and they'll pick up another 75%. Our cost is going to be 6.25%.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone from the public wishing to ask a question or provide additional information on this item? Have a gentleman from the state OES.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members. Greg and Doug, again, my name's Jeff Tony, I'm with CAL-ES, I'm the division supervisor for here in Lake County. Thanks for having all of us and our partner agencies, albeit under the circumstances. I know the county has been through a lot the past few years, and unfortunately, this year was the city's turn. Quick correction, I think, Doug, on your figure, and how the cost share works, if I can kind of explain the big picture. Under a federally presidential declared disaster, we're fortunate that FEMA can come in and provide services and funding. So if you have a project, they will fund, you can get reimbursed for 75% of the cost of the project. Remaining 25%, state of California will pick up 75% of that, which is 18.75%, remaining the 6.25% local cost share. So if my math is right, that probably will be around $8,000 of a $134,000 project. So, that's just the way it's set up in reimbursement, it's category B, which is an emergency protective measure to protect those slopes and the homes and property below those. So, any questions on that process? I'd be happy to take those, or in response in general. Feel free, or I'll be hanging around.
And thank you for being here.
Thank you for serving on the housing task force, and Greg for your leadership, and Doug, you've been really great to work with, a lot of long hours, and it takes a big team effort. Keep chipping away.
They scare people, thank you so much.
Sure.
Anyone else wishing to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back. Vice Mayor, you have a comment?
I was just checking in, so since you're asking for no more than $50, are you saying that the cost of the work is approximately $200,000 now?
No. No, the total project, what they have proposed here is 134,500. NRCS, which is the federal, right? They're going to pick up 75%, which is $108,75. And then our sponsor cost would be $33,625, and then we would request funding 75% from CAL-ES, which would knock that price down even further.
But you're asking us to say up to $250,000, so there's a potential that it could cost all the way up to $200,000 for the work that's being looked at? What's the, if it's covered 75% of 75, what's the, because I see that K-bar was on the report on the overhead, but it wasn't in the report that we were given earlier, so that's an additional thing that...
The K-rail?
The K-rail, sorry. Yeah, the K-rail, well, that's what's holding up this right now, we have not found a definitive cost on that yet, based on what the county did back in 2015. We need to find, talk to vendors and find out if those numbers are still set. And as of today, I did not have a chance to make that call.
And so basically, the cost of the work could increase, cover 75% by the feds, and then 75% by the state, which still would leave us with the 6.25%.
Bottom line, you're going to pay 6.25%.
The other question is staff. Don't mean to put you on the spot, Mr. Mayor, but where would the K-rail be placed, roughly? Is that on San Joaquin?
Yeah, it's in the drainages above San Joaquin Lake Shore Drive, we've got valleys, so we're trying to, those are all going through the main drainage. Like I said, NRCS only does...
So it would be the slope side of San Joaquin extension, not the edge?
Yes.
The hill edge?
To the, yes.
Worry about the weight on the edge of that road?
Yeah, those will all be in stable areas, yeah.
I'm sure.
We've identified a couple of spots that we've changed it, because there's slope failure below some of the spots that they originally intended for them on, and I say that can't be...
Thank you for doing that.
The whole point is to protect the houses that couldn't burn in the fire.
Exactly. Any other questions or comments? Very well, we have an action.
I'm going to make a motion and authorize commitment of the cost of share of cost expenses not to exceed $50,000.
I have a motion to second by Councilmember Overton. We have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatia?
Aye.
Mayor Pardon?
Aye. Thank you very much for your presentation, thank you for your comments. Now we're jumping back to item 10. Consideration of Resolution 2017-87 to adopt fees applicable to commercial cannabis and marijuana dispensary fees. Mr. Paulson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll introduce Chris Becknell, our acquaintance director for this one.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. So, October 26th, the city council adopted ordinances 2017, 2017, which were the commercial cannabis, zoning use permits, regulatory permits, and also the marijuana dispensary ordinances. Those ordinances take effect about 30 days after adoption. As a part of those ordinances, there were fees involved in the adoption of the ordinances. This is to set those fees for those ordinances. Those fees are broken down into basically three broad categories. One is the commercial cannabis fees, use fees. Those are the fees that are basically involved with community development when they establish the use of the land for a particular, for a particular use, for example, cultivation, manufacturer, distributor, a testing lab for your ministry, or a processor. As a part of that, once the use has been granted, most use fees, most uses on land run with the land, in this case being run with the particular permit. So if the use of the land stops, the use permit itself stops as well. That's why we have a transfer fee, a modification fee, a termination fee, and an appeal fee. The appeal fee is if someone applies for a use permit, it's denied, and they have to appeal it to the council. The next part of the commercial cannabis fees are the regulatory permit fees. This deals with the actual operation, setting up the operation of the business. So within those fees, you have a new business regulatory permit fee, a reinstatement fee if they lose the permit for some reason, they do something wrong, and they have to reinstate it, a relocation fee if they are not operating in accordance with the terms of the permit, and the city end up having to revoke the permit, there'll be a fee assessed for doing that. And an abandonment fee if they decide to just stop doing business and abandon their old operation, and there'll be a fee associated with that. The other thing involved in this particular section is there are provisions for odor control under the commercial cannabis ordinance. This is something new, so we have established an inspection fee for odor control, and an inspection fee for other, because there are other requirements of the business must maintain during the operation of the business over a period of time, so we have set up specific inspection fees for that as well. And obviously, if the regulatory permit fee is denied, or some other inspection is denied, there's an appeal fee for that, should they appeal the action of the staff. The last group of fees are marijuana dispensary fees. Now, we've had a marijuana dispensary ordinance before, we were modifying it, but we didn't have fees associated with the marijuana dispensaries before. So these are new fees for this particular ordinance, and so there is an initial license fee. The marijuana dispensary requires an annual renewal, so there's a separate fee for that each year. Then a reinstatement fee, a transfer fee, and obviously, if an application is denied, there's a provision for appeal. So those basically are the fees that are proposed to be adopted, and this is a notice public hearing, so the public is allowed to comment on them. Most of the fees under the use are cost plus overhead at 50%, because at the time... So these are new fees for this particular ordinance, and so there's an initial license fee. The marijuana dispensary requires an annual renewal, so there's a separate fee for that each year, then a reinstatement fee, a transfer fee, and obviously, if an application is denied, there's a provision for appeal. So those basically are the fees that are proposed to be adopted. This is a notice public hearing, so the public is allowed to comment on them. Most of the fees under the use are cost plus overhead at 50% because at the time of the use and setup, we don't know what's going to be involved, and there's a lot, a lot of work, so it's very hard to set a specific fee for that. So we set it up as a cost plus overhead. Most of the other fees, we are able to pretty much estimate what the fee would be based on a standard pro forma operation, like a business regulatory permit fee, a standard, there's a standard process they have to go through in terms of being approved, so that's why there's a specific fee there rather than just a cost plus overhead. And that pretty much summarizes the fees we requested to adopt by motion Resolution 2017-87. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions or staff? I'd like to open this.
For the finance director, I'm just curious. I understand that the proceeds from commercial grows or dispensaries can't be deposited into a regular bank covered by FPH or whatever. I think the state of California is considering opening a state-run bank or something for that big boom that's coming in January supposedly. How, how are these fees going to be transmitted to the city in cash or what?
We always are willing to accept, hold our cash anytime they want if they want. You raise a good question. The federal government does not recognize as a legal business marijuana operations, so banks are reluctant to open accounts for marijuana-related businesses. I think you will see that trend change over time, and I know that I was just reading that California is looking at setting that up to kind of deal with that issue. If they write a check to us for the fees, we'll certainly deposit it. I don't think that, we'll obviously make sure that it goes through before we do any of the work. But if they pay us in cash, we'd certainly deposit the cash, and if it's a substantial amount of cash, we have procedures set up to control the cash and make sure it gets done with the bank on a time of need, so there's no chance of misappropriation upon sort of getting this director.
Thank you. I'm just curious.
Sure. Mr.?
Yes. I will.
I just kind of have a comment on that. I believe what they were talking about is marijuana dispensaries and stuff themselves, but we're not. I don't think we're going to have a problem with that as depositing money. I think what we're, what they were talking about on the news and stuff that you've been hearing is actual dispensaries, the growers and stuff, because the federal government doesn't want to recognize them, they don't, they won't cover their money in the bank. So banks are refusing basically to take it back. We're not a dispensary.
Oh, I know.
So I don't think we're going to have a problem.
Our money's not being trusted.
There you go. Any other questions? I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to make a comment, this is your chance to do that on this item. Very well, seeing now, I will bring it back.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2017-87, a resolution of the City Council of City Clearlake, adopting fees related to commercial cannabis and marijuana dispensaries.
Second.
Have a motion as seconded by Vice Mayor. Do we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perdop?
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to item 11, consideration of Resolution 2017-88, a resolution of the City Council of City Clearlake authorizing and submitting an application to HCD for community development block grant program. Mr. Paulson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will reintroduce our finance directors.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. So Housing Community Development and which operates the Community Development Block Grant Program of the state of California puts out NOFOs, Notice of Funding Availableities, every, periodically. They had put one out recently for, for California. They have up to, I believe it was 20, I believe it was $28 million statewide available for, for distribution. The city could apply for up to $5 million of those fees. We have submitted a, prepared a grant application, and would like to submit it for a total of $3 million, basically comprised of two parts. One part of the grant across is for the public improvement, which is the Dan Road Extension, which connects basically Phillips Avenue down to Dan Road, which would connect basically the avenues down to the Walmart shopping area. And the other part of that is to fund the code enforcement for another two years of operation in the amount of $500,000, that's roughly about $250,000 a year. You remember half code enforcement is paid for out of the general fund. This would fund the other half of code enforcement for, for the next two years. And we would ask that you authorize, approve the filing of the grant, authorize the city manager to sign the grant application, execute all the documents that are needed to submit the application.
Thank you, Mr. Becknell. Vice Mayor, do you have a question?
Yeah, it just struck me as I was looking over that I hadn't noticed the number was 2.5 million compared to, I believe, what we had originally intended to spend for Dan Road Extension was 1 million. Has that project, has the scope of that project been extended compared to the original idea, like sidewalks or something like that? I just don't remember it being 2.5 originally when we spoke about using bond A funds for that project.
The costs have gone up. We just received the estimate from Heidi at Coastline, and the costs have gone up some.
Some, but it's not 2.5, it's 1.5 now approximately. If you look on the resolution, it's 1,491,15. I was looking at the first part, and that's why, thank you.
Any other questions? I go over the subject to the public. Anyone wishing to address counsel on this item, please step forward. Form an early line to the right. Seeing now, I'll bring it back. For action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt Resolution Number 2017-88, a resolution of City Council of City Clearlake authorizing submission of application to HCD for community development block program.
Second, have a motion as seconded by Councilmember Harris. Do we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perdop?
Aye. Thank you all very much. Moving on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, as was discussed earlier, our city Halloween was a great success, so we're looking forward to that going on for many years. I've had just a tremendous number of fire-related meetings over the last couple of weeks, it just did, it just seems to go on and on. We've got another one tomorrow, so they just keep going, but it's good. We're showing progress and things are moving forward. Chris and I met with, our finance director and I met with our financing team who wanted to review the fire area to ensure it did not impact our upcoming bond issue. There was concern, we were actually, the week of the fire, we were going out for pricing and selling of the bonds, and that had to be put to a halt at that time because there was concern about did that impact our, our underlying properties and our ability to repay the bonds. Turns out that the fire did not come into the redevelopment project area whatsoever, so that was a good thing. The financing team did come out and tour the area, and they're assured that there's not an impact, so we'll be going forward with that finding, that refunding of the bonds. We had a planning commission meeting on Tuesday where we reviewed the application for the Patriot gas station expansion. That has been continued to the next meeting. I attended the CC for C citizens caring for Clearlake Appreciation BBQ with the Colocal and Dole property, which is the property that we partnered with them, cleaning up. Everybody in that neighborhood is very happy about that project. I gave a presentation to the Lake County Association of Realtors of our Chitich Clan and the projects that we're making, and they were very pleased. I stressed to them that the things that we're doing here are improving the property values, and they really like hearing that, so. Also this week, we had a pre-winter workshop where we brought in all the various folks who might be responding to floods and other types of issues. I want to have a big thank you to Chief Sepeda. He puts that together every year. We have folks from PG&E, from the county, from the sheriff, our folks. We have probably 20 people here talking about what resources we have that can be shared if we do have a disaster and do a little planning for those. Thanks again to Chief Sepeda. Okay, I want to go over a number of events just for the benefit of the people watching primarily. Because we're right at holiday season, we can cancel the meeting that's on Thanksgiving. We also canceled the meeting that is during Christmas week. Well, because of the emergency, every 14 days, we have to come back and reauthorize our public health emergency. Well, because of that, we have to come back and do quite a few special meetings, so that's what all this is about. But on a positive note, on Monday, November 13th, we're going to be having a flag lowering ceremony at Austin Park, so really encourage everybody to come out. That's 11 o'clock. And I'm sure the mayor will talk about that a little bit more, so I won't steal all this thunder. November 16th, we have a special meeting. Thanksgiving is on November 23rd, special meeting on the 30th of November. December 14th is a regular council meeting, but then the very next week, we have another special council meeting because the week after, which was the regular council meeting, was canceled. So then we'll have another special meeting on the 4th of January, and then our regular council meeting on the 11th of January. And at that point, we'll get back to a normal schedule and hopefully not have all these actual special meetings. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And thank you again for all your time, and you're putting in help to folks who were in the burn and helping us to recover from it. Appreciate it.
There, since you said that, all of our staff has really been doing a tremendous job. I want to just, he doesn't like this, but Doug has not had a weekend off since this whole thing, but yeah, I mean, he's putting in tremendous numbers of hours, and he's really kind of an unsung hero behind all this. Appreciate him to no end.
Absolutely, and everyone. Thank you. Thank you. So as I bring it back, and we'll hear from the other council members on their reports, and we were just mentioning Doug, had a conversation with our public works director, and I want, we received a letter from a concerned citizen that lives out in the burn area about the degradation of the road, deterioration of our Lake Shore Drive, and he's wanting something done about it. And I just want to let everybody know, we are now entering into a recovery period, and our roads are going to be heavily impacted. We have vehicles traveling on those roadways that far and in a way exceed the weight limits that those roads were engineered to, to carry. Water trucks, there was a water truck weighed in at now 8,000, at least, plus, plus. The 10-wheelers, they're hauling debris out. All of those vehicles are going to impact and tear up our roadway, and there's really nothing we can say or do about it until the cleanup is done. I was hoping to bring this up before FEMA left. I know that you've been talking with FEMA and hoping that we can secure additional funding that will help restore our roadways. But please be patient as we recover and clean up in the burn, those areas affected by it, because unfortunately, our roads are going to get torn up. Winter coming, winter's on us. Please drive safe, drive slow, and watch for potholes because we're going to have those. Thank you very much. And I will now turn to I'm over to Ms. Overton for her report. Because I'm saving it for last.
I don't have a lot to report, but I know that before we got FEMA money for the slides that happened up there at San Joaquin, and when I first got on city council, we worked really hard to get that, called Bob Kalusha, for, give us our roads, he'll do it for us. Mainly, I've been just doing the recovery stuff at the center, it's just going on, and you know, we're averaging probably in our office, you guys talk about city getting calls, and you have no idea. On Sunday, literally, I wanted to think I could do some work in two hours, I got 31 calls in two hours. So my staff and my volunteers there have been really awesome to, you know, really pick up a lot of that, it's a very time-consuming for us. But I'll tell you, FEMA and everybody that's in there have been just wonderful to work with. They have been very generous to come and help. They bring us breakfast once in a while, so I love them when they do that, because most of the time I don't get to eat. So that's definitely a different experience than what I had with the other evacuations. So I think we've all learned from all of these different things that we do, we set it up fairly fast. But you know, I mean, all of them have been very good about staying in contact and doing things, so it's been kind of, actually, it's not been bad. Working with them has been very nice. And they're really, and you know, I encourage people to really start coming in. I know I got some calls at the beginning because there was just a lot of people that were there that really should have been getting services, and it was interfering in a lot of our people that needed it. And I know I've talked to a few that really haven't came in yet, so I really stress that we try to get that out to people that want to know that it's coming to an end and that they haven't hit there. Some of them are kind of just too, too much, but they need to come in. I'm still talking to people that haven't actually come in, so we need to get them in there. So if you see anybody out that you know, please inform them that they need to get them in. So, but it's been very nice, and I really do thank all of you guys and all our staff and the public for really putting in and being there and doing the hard work. It's been rough. I just happened to went down to Santa Rosa today, and you know, it's, we're actually very lucky. It's kind of devastating down there when you really go through it. We think we have a lot, but it's even more down there. So I think we've been very lucky up here to have what we have. And again, good to us because everybody that we have dealt with has said they cannot believe our county, and again, how we all kick in and help each other, you know? And so again, the people who travel all over tell us we are the best people to work with. So I mean, I really pat us on the back for that. We are always good in emergency situations. We all come together no matter what, and they cannot believe us. So I really thank all of you guys for being there.
Mr. Harris?
Well, to start off by saying that I did take an opportunity to take a drive out to the damaged area. I wanted to kind of make sure that I went out after all the fire suppression was conquered and the cleanup had not yet begun, so I did take a run out there to check it out, and it's heartbreaking to see all this, something that, I mean, an area of our city that I've seen since I was a child, you know, and it's just completely, completely changed forever. And to see the rebuilt effort underway and so rapidly underway, I can't say enough how much I appreciate the efforts of Doug Harren and his staff and public works, and the city staff and our police department, and everybody that's participated, including our volunteers and our community. We have an amazing community in the way it came together so quickly, and will continue. I know the efforts are ongoing, and I truly appreciate that. On a positive note, we had a couple of unique events take place that I participated in. One of them was the Harvest Festival at Carlay High School. I have a particular interest there with my wife, working at that particular site, so I did provide a fun event with the Harvest Festival. I DJed for an entire day in front of the barbecue and stuff for the kids, it was really a lot of fun. And then there was the Chunk or Treat Event, which I participated in, and I was seen riding around on a dinosaur, which was, is hard to balance. Turns out on the dinosaur, so it was pretty keen. And then I gave out with our company about 200 pounds of candy. That was a lot of people participating in the event, a lot of candy getting given out, and what a really positive experience that is for our community, and I appreciate everybody who puts that together every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Bennett?
Hardly anything to report. I did not make the Lake County Transit Meeting yesterday. I was sick. The mayor was there to report on that. I did go to come down to City Hall on Halloween and saw the staff who was doing an awesome job. Kudos to them once again, and volunteers. Didn't recognize some of them. I loved the pair of glasses in particular. I won't mention any names. You can't hide, but it's been a, I've had an illness in the family and been in the Bay Area a bit for the last couple of weeks, so taking up some of my time. couple of weeks, so taking up some of my time.
Vice Mayor.
So I haven't had any meetings, I have a couple coming up next week. We have the marketing committee meeting on Wednesday, I'm hoping, and I, we also have a LAFCO meeting coming up next Wednesday, that will be in Lakeport, so I'll have more to report on those. I did want to jump on something Councilmember Harris said about Chunk or Treat. I wanted to make sure and thank Amy Landrum and Kim Van Horn for their efforts at the youth center to put that together. That was also hosted by Lake Community Pride Foundation as well, and thank them as well for supporting the community for those types of activities. I think Halloween was a wonderful day, beautiful, not raining for the first time in years. I think everybody enjoyed it immensely. Today, I helped host a Veterans Day activity at Woodland Community College. I want to thank our mayor for coming and speaking to veterans, students, and faculty as well. And I also want to thank interim chief Selly for coming to the event and bringing his officers as well to support the event. I think it's important for us to celebrate that day, and I'm looking forward to Monday to finish it off with style. I have been getting a lot of phone calls about Measure V, and I had a really good conversation with Mr. Herron about this, and we definitely had our, and we've kind of discussed this already, we definitely had our struggles in starting. We lost a trailer to be able to move our equipment. Then we started doing the work, then we had some other struggles with staff being pulled for other priority jobs that needed to get done, and then the fires hit. Your roads are not being ignored. We are just as frustrated with the staff, within the staff, as well as in the community, to not be able to get to what we want to get to, but at this moment in time, the fire and recovering and preparing for rebuild is our priority. And I know that, we're talking with Mr. Herron, that there is a plan. There's always been a plan, but there's definitely a plan to continue the process and make sure that everything gets done the way it should be done. So please be patient with us. We also want to get all the roads done, just as much as you do. We live on these roads, and so we're definitely looking forward to that. So thank you for taking my phone call the other day and helping me see the bigger picture as well. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. On the 30th of October, I went down to Project Restoration. Project Restoration is a new facility opened up in Lower Lake that is now housing some of our higher utilizers. High utilizers are people who are calling, they need service, either from the police department, fire, EMS, and our emergency services at the hospital. Again, if you're not familiar, Adventist Health Clearlake, and Adventist Health started a $300,000 grant, looking at what we could do to try to, number one, save money by helping these people out as individuals and getting them housing. So Project Restoration was a big chunk of that, a big part of that, giving housing to those who needed it, and medical attention to those who needed it most, and it is now full. I'm excited to go to a meeting tomorrow where we'll get an update on that report. I want to thank Lieutenant Selly who made part of that, helping to identify key people in our community that needed help the most, and he did that. And hopefully, those people will receive the help that they need and get back on their feet and become productive citizens again. So I'm excited to see that. Again, thanks for the Halloween party, came down and got to see staff, I got to see Maverick running around. Anyway, what was that name, the truck driver school was the number for that? I need that number. No, it just wasn't here. On the 2nd of November, stole some notes from the city manager, and I spoke with the Park Study Club, great group of people up there, had a nice lunch, also very impressed and pleasantly surprised with the work the city is doing, city staff. So thanks, thanks again for your leadership, thanks to all the staff that are doing things. They love to see the city turning around. Today, at the Veterans Presentation, I was pulled aside and thanked by a person who lives up on COH, who just loves what she's seeing in the city and likes to tell people about it. So good, positive things happening, and it's because we're all born together and going in the right direction. I did go to the meeting yesterday, and I want to thank all those there. We had a couple of projects that the Public Works Director was concerned about and presented to the Lake Area Planning Council. Those items, I asked unanimously to focus on roundabouts, try to mitigate some of the problems we see at Highway 53 and Dan Road, Dan Road Extension in the mornings, with all the backloading onto the highway, blocking traffic lanes and being a danger. So hopefully, we can get moving forward on that, and also the project to reconnect, or to connect from the avenues down toward the college. Let's see, tomorrow, Mr. Pulson might have excused the chief of police, so he can go to another event, and I'll go attend the Project Restoration meeting for both of us. And then, as the city manager brought up, thanks to a super community member, a guy who's always had his heart here in Clearlake, Carl Webb, who last year said, "Why are we retiring the flag on a kind of nondescript day in the middle of October? Why couldn't we do that on Veterans Day?" Or at least close to Veterans Day, and recognize our veterans who fought and bled for the colors that flag and represent so much of our freedoms and liberties. And I thought, man, that is a good idea. So I'd like to thank the Park Study Club, who donates our flag every year, and for allowing us to move that time to honor our veterans, and we will retire the flag on Monday at 11:00 a.m. I wanted to do it on the 11th month, the 11th day at the 11th hour, but that didn't work out, because it's a huge flag, and we're really fortunate. We're going to have the colored honor guard there, our veterans honor guard, we're going to have a whole bunch of students from Burns Valley, and we're going to have some veteran speakers talking about what it is to be a veteran, and I really hope that the kids are listening, because it's some good information that they can carry with them forever. Again, thanks, thanks to staff, thanks for all you're doing. We kind of, seems like maybe if you're not a part of it, go on and on with our appreciation, but with the fires and everything going on, and going to emergency housing meetings, and trying to find funding and ways to clean up, people are burning the candle at both ends, and they need to be recognized for it, and we do. So any future agenda items, anyone wanting to present at this time? Very well. Then we will adjourn, but we must reconvene in about five minutes for our continued closed session. Thank you very much for your attention.